All right. Well, we're going to call the January 16th meeting of the Situate Zoning Board of Appeals to order. Before we get started, I would like to introduce our newest member, George, and can you pronounce your last name for the record?
Siksus.
Siksus. As a fellow last-named person that is oft mispronounced, I wanted to give you that opportunity. Welcome.
Thank you.
So, we are going to jump quickly to item three on our agenda, the additional business, and start with that because our building inspector needs to run to another meeting.
Is somebody here on number one?
I am not sure if someone's here on number one.
Yeah, I don't know if you weren't, because I think there was a request. Oh, yeah, the Herringbrook Meadow. They requested a continuance.
Oh, okay. So, to that end, Bob, just quickly before we get to you, the Herringbrook Meadow application regarding the sign has continued again. They have asked for a continuance in order to gather some more information in response to some of the public questions and comments that were received at our last meeting. So, that has been continued to our next meeting, which will be February 20th. They have requested that continuance, and on that, do we have a motion?
I move to continue the hearing on Herringbrook Meadows' request for signage on Route 3A to our next regularly scheduled meeting in February.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. With that, we will move to additional business. So, Bob, if you will, please.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, board members. So, you've seen material on this proposed amendment or change to Section 830 of the zoning bylaws, and also a small change to Section 810, but Section 830 is the sort of meat of the situation. The change that I'm proposing, and I'm not, I'm starting out to say that I would love and appreciate input from board members and others, how this is to be achieved, but the problem is fairly defined. We have in town, I want to say several, there are three that stand out, but I'll bet anything there are many more, properties that have been basically abandoned by their owners for one reason or another. Once that happens, the property deteriorates. In one case, it's on a coastal beach, and the way the ocean has entered the house multiple times and done its work, that kind of thing. We have a lot of complaints, and the complaints come to my office from neighbors saying, you know, there's a house next to me, it's blighting the neighborhood, it's dangerous, there are perhaps activities going on there that are not within the law, there's a potential for fires either set by vandals or accidental, there's certainly potential for vermin to collect. So, if you've got one of these in your neighborhood, you know, it's very detrimental, and it doesn't happen everywhere, you know, in town, but when it happens, it's extremely, as I say, detrimental, and people complain about it. They want something done about it. Right now, the way Section 830 is written, if I haven't pulled a building permit to repair that house, for instance, after a fire or after destruction by the ocean within three years, and if I haven't completed the project within four years, although I can get an extension on that completion, then I'm basically shut off. It's unclear if there are any residual rights to that property that I still have, but they're certainly not mentioned in the zoning bylaws. So, at that point of time, if the property remains abandoned, there's literally nothing anyone can do about it. If it's on a non-conforming lot, which the ones I'm thinking of are, even the lot itself has no value because once I've torn the structure down or a potential developer has torn the structure down, I can't rebuild. So, I'd like to solve that problem. This may not be the way to do it, but I've given it my best shot, and I can go over it with you in as much detail as you like, if we think that's a, you know, good use of Basically, as I said, the existing 830, after that period of time shuts you off from further use of the non-conforming property. The first thing that occurred to me was that the problem children, so to speak, that we're dealing with, and really, we do get complaints, maybe a couple a month, maybe once a month, but a continuing stream. And also, interestingly, we've gotten inquiries, at least on one of these properties, from potential and had to tell them, no, you can't really consider this as a possible development site because of the same memorandum. So, I'd like to distinguish in this change between residential and non-residential properties. I'd like to clarify some of the language, that's just housekeeping, and I'd like to make the time lapse between the damage or destruction and your ability to reclaim that property and restore it basically open-ended, excuse me, for residential properties only. For commercial properties or even more sort of definitively for properties that do not conform in their use to the district where they are, I would not take that restriction away. I would then want to continue to incentivize the owners of those properties to make repairs and to restore the properties to good condition in a manner that, you know, is a time, has a time limit to it. But for residential, there's, it seems to me that there are reasons that could be extended probate, there could be extended divorce battle, there could be sickness or illness or whatever, that the three-year time period just doesn't seem sufficient. And with it imposed, I think there are cases where people have simply walked away. You know, maybe they've cashed the insurance check and walked away, but the result is the same, and the result is these blighted properties that are very detrimental to the neighborhood. And I'd like for there to be a way for those properties to retain their value, to retain their attractiveness to either the owners to redevelop or to other people to come in and buy them and do something to restore them. So, that was the intent of this. I tried to close some loopholes. One is that I don't want this retroactive. I would like to see it apply to existing damaged or deteriorated properties, but not go back and try and recapture properties that were damaged five, 10, 15, 20 years ago, whatever, because I think that's a slippery slope. But I think going forward, it could be applied effectively to at least minimize, if not prevent, the kind of blight that we do see in various places across town. So, that's basically what's proposed. And as I said, I'm not an attorney. I'm someone who's kind of on the front line in terms of seeing and have to deal with, having to deal with complaints concerning this problem, and I'd love to be able to tell people who call, yes, you know, there is a way. It may not be happening to that building right next door to you, but it could happen in terms of being allowed by the zoning bylaws, and maybe someday it will happen. Simple as that.
Thank you, Bob.
I just had a quick question, Bob. You said that you wanted not to be retroactive like 10, 15 years ago. Does that mean, so those houses that were destroyed 10, 15 years ago that are completely wiped out, or?
Yeah, I would like to make it, Tom, something that would not recognize, for instance, a foundation half-buried on the Old Town Way, or a stone foundation somewhere in the woods from 1780.
But in the instance, like you said, maybe the one that was close to the water, say that was damaged 10 years ago, but the structure's still standing, that would qualify?
I would like this to apply to that structure.
But something where, say that house had been knocked down and there was just a foundation there, it wouldn't apply to something?
Again, it's a subtlety, but yes, that would be the intent.
Is the foundation a structure?
I think so. Yeah, I mean, that's.
I think it would be.
That's a good question. Yes, the foundation, I would say, is a structure.
So, not just existing as of the effective date, but you also want it to be prospective? So, if something happens tomorrow, you want it to apply to?
I would definitely want it to apply to that.
Your language should get tweaked.
But I do think.
Typically, with a bylaw, you wouldn't say that this applies to tomorrow. Once the bylaw is passed, it applies.
No, agreed, but the way, because it's single or two-family or accessory structure, the two existing as of the effective date, so that implies that the structure has to exist as of the effective date. As you read, oh, as of is read as.
It can exist in a downtown state.
Yes, beginning.
Beginning of the effective date. There were a number of structures that were destroyed in the Blizzard of '78.
Right.
One has been in front of this board, and the land court and the appeals court, I think, three times, and the board has consistently denied the request that parcel be developed, and the appeals, the land court has upheld it, and the appeals court has upheld the land court.
Based on a two-year time lapse.
Exactly. And then, after the Blizzard of '78, there was also the No Name Storm, and obviously, we're prime for this to happen with greater frequency going forward. Bob, I think that you wield your authority sparingly and judiciously. My concern is for the next Bob, because you are not immortal, as far as I know. And will the next zoning enforcement officer and building commissioner be as judicious? That's my concern, rather than having a bright-line rule, having it be more nebulous. That's my concern.
And so, not disagreeing at all, trying to understand, what would be the negative there? What's the concern? How does that play out in a hypothetical?
Somebody comes in five years later and can rebuild something, or six years later, or seven years later.
Right.
I think that we want to encourage people to rebuild as soon as possible, so that we don't have these blighted homes in our midst.
I definitely agree with that, and that was the intent of the original bylaw, there's no question about it. But it does have unintended consequences as well.
But, and those two consequences are at odds, right? Either we're going, either we're going to stop people from waiting a certain amount of time, and if we do, that means if they wait more than a certain amount of time, then we're going to have properties that become unbuildable lots.
Useless.
Yeah.
It's not going to have no value. There's, land in Situate is always going to have value. It would have diminished value.
It would probably only have value to the two of butters if there's one person.
Two, or if there are more butters?
Yeah, right, so up to three, I'd say.
Right. And keep in mind, this is a town bylaw. So, if we do not enact this, if we do it, if we do not enact this and it stays in place, that blighted parcel that is not developed could be developed by seeking relief from this bylaw.
Right.
It could be developed under 40B. So, your blighted parcel that's next door, and say, 8,000 square feet of land, could be a two-bedroom, or, excuse me, a two-unit 40B, or a three-unit 40B. You know, again, arguing the other way.
Could be the first one I'm aware of in the history of the Commonwealth.
No, 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 Barbara St. Andre did a three-unit 40B.
All right.
Could it be that if the, if we put into the appropriate location and the authority of this board to grant relief from the two-year period?
Take it away from Bob and give it to us?
Yeah.
Make it a special permit.
I don't have the ability to grant relief from that.
But this would give him the authority to not, there would be no limit. If instead, we make a special permit to grant relief and puts it in our hands.
I'd be more in favor of that.
That way, we're still basically encouraging the two-year moratorium and the two-year action on the part of the property owner.
Right, because that's my right. After that, it's not by right.
Could you incentivize it that after three years, you're required to have a special permit and it becomes more onerous?
I think that's a reasonable thought.
Because I think the one situation that I'm concerned about, which I think is pretty frequent, and is going to become more frequent, is probates. Certain families own property out here, somebody dies, and you have up to three years to probate an estate. So, they could go up to, you know, two years, 364 days, probate the estate, one day later they lose this right.
Well.
And there might be a litigious reason for waiting.
They can apply for a building permit at any time and then just extend it. I mean, it's not, it's not as though there is no alternative. There is the alternative of applying.
But what if there's?
The difficulty there, Brian, is that.
Now you're doing a determination of heirs, you know?
Yeah, you may not have an owner.
Right. You don't have an applicant for a building.
Right, right.
Which is valid, which is valid. In a probate situation, we have kids fighting.
Right, yes.
You have incapacity, you have the Great Recession.
Right, I mean, a lot of reasons.
All reasons where we would almost undoubtedly say, hell, the bylaw provides for our ability to grant a special permit or to find that this should be way, however we draft it, and this is exactly the reason why we drafted it that way.
But I don't disagree that if the board wanted to take the responsibility of ruling on, you know, cases like in this area and wanted to do it through the special permit process after a particular time period had elapsed, it's not a bad idea.
And I think the, and I'd be in favor of going out further than three years and then making a special permit provision after that.
I think.
Expanding that.
I'd leave it at two years and then.
Well, it's two years and 810, Ed, which is abandoned or not used.
Right, so leave it at two years.
830 is actually three.
Right.
All right, so leave it at three.
There's some conflict there.
Without, unless a special permit is granted, or a finding of the zoning board of appeals to extend the period. It doesn't even have to be a special permit, just a finding to extend the period.
That seems to make sense to me, and if we do it that way, do we still need the division between residential and commercial? Because, as a, for instance.
Probably not.
Say a beloved commercial establishment existed in Situate and it's destroyed by fire on a non-conforming lot, and there's a credit crisis or another trouble with real estate.
In a commercial zone that doesn't have septic systems.
Or there's a cleanup.
Dad's convenience store.
Next to a gas station?
And it has trouble figuring out what they're going to do in terms of septic or sewer, and they miss the deadline. If we're already set up to issue special permits due to those types of delays, is it necessary to close the door entirely on commercial? Or can it be left to this board, say, no, we're going to look at the situation for that property, whether it's, we're going to look at, we're going to weigh the pros and cons, and we're going to come to a decision?
You know, I certainly would have, I'd have no problem with that. And the added benefit of that, it's at a public hearing.
Yep. I've seen some land use attorneys nodding their head because they just like the opportunity to make the argument.
Well, the other argument, though, is.
As they should.
I think also, I think 810 and 830 should be in line, the same number of years.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
What about the appeal?
I'm not sure I think that they shouldn't be, but I see the difference in, one is you've abandoned something, a decision has been made to discontinue a non-conforming use or the use of a non-conforming structure. The other one, it wasn't a decision, right? It was, that decision was made for you.
Yeah. So, for example, there was a gas station in Green Bush when I was a kid. It was a Getty gas station, and let's just say that gas station had a fire. If they don't rebuild in two years, they're out of luck.
Well, fire under, would be the three-four rule now under 830, right?
Right.
But if they decided to shut down business for a little while.
That would be excellent.
It would be, so to a certain extent, I can understand the, we're just going to shut it down, we're not going to renovate this house and try to resell it, we're just going to walk away, and if it was a fire and it's not someone's fault and they need to get their affairs in order to fix it, maybe they should have a little bit more time, than opposed to maybe we want to incentivize a business or a builder to not just abandon a project and leave it unoccupied or unused or abandoned for that long.
Well, in theory, anyone can come before the board looking for relief from any bylaw.
That's right.
I'm only suggesting that by putting into the bylaw a specific course of action, it makes, it streamlines it so that there isn't a concern. I guess my worry or my concern is, how do the courts look at appeal, at an appeal of our decision? If it's, if they're asking, if someone's asking for relief of the existing bylaw and we say no because that's the bylaw, whereas if we have that wiggle room of, at the opinion of the board, does the court then more readily overturn us?
Overtone us if we what?
If we deny it. If we enforce the two-year or three-year by saying, you know, you really haven't given us any legitimate reasons why you haven't moved forward on this, you've owned the property, you know, there's no extenuating circumstances.
I would say that that risk exists already, even if we don't change the bylaw.
All right. Again, I'm looking for an opinion on that.
I see the risk at this point of the town being accused, so to speak, of taking value from property without compensation.
In my.
But it's not arbitrary.
No, and in my action, I'm always looking to, if the property owner has the means to go forward and make the property better than it is, I'm going to go by the, you know, go with the property owner, so hopefully future boards would feel the same way.
Well, Bob, I hope we've helped.
Well, no, you have, I think. I mean, if there's a consensus that simply inserting the provision of after the time period expires of coming before the board and, you know, a reasonable decision being made by the board as to whether or not to allow you to rebuild or use the property over again, I think that's, it's certainly an easy change. You just insert that into the existing.
Except by special permit by the zoning board of appeals. Start it with that and then say.
I think, to your point, you should say, there should be something contained in this section as to what we're considering.
Yeah, no, there should be special permit criteria.
Yeah.
Yeah, or something along the lines of shall not be unreasonably withheld. I mean, that's.
Those are special permit criteria, already meet it.
It is used.
I'm not sure it does.
Not substantially detrimental, et cetera, supply, you know, all of that kicks in.
Well, that's that the changes or that the increase in the nonconformity is not substantially more detrimental.
In the.
This is a, because the bylaw already says that you're rebuilding it in the same form that it was.
The bylaw that's written now says you've got to be less non-conforming when you rebuild. I would propose to change that to be not more non-conforming, which is different.
Right.
Right, great.
Yeah.
So, you can build on the same envelope.
You could build on the same foundation, for example, if that's all that was left.
Might be able to go up, but.
You could go up. But if you added more than 20%, you'd be back under.
Section six.
Section 810.
810, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess along the lines of what you were saying, it becomes a hard decision to defend or say why you're making it at one hearing and why you're not another. If the bylaw says four, and arguably, we're here to interpret the bylaw or apply it to certain situations, and the bylaw says it's got to be done within four years, and someone comes to us for a special permit because it's taken them six years, I guess that criteria needs to be upon a board finding that sufficient reasoning was given before the delay, which basically will need to be something more than the, we just didn't get around to it until now, right? We couldn't get a loan. Timmy and Suzie were fighting over who got 51%. Or, you know, the woman who owned it was incapacitated and.
What do some of the other towns do? Not to steal their bylaws, but just to get a sense.
That's a good question, Tom, and I can't really answer it here. I've got some information from Hingham and.
Hingham, I mean, doesn't mention.
I would have to kind of gel that together.
I mean, I can look it up, too. I just don't know if you knew of it.
I think there's something on the books in Hingham. I think there's something in Hull and something in Cohasset that I've been told about.
Okay.
So, I don't, I didn't drag those out.
You're going to advisory on this tonight?
No, no, I'm going on the departmental budget.
Okay, that's easier, in terms of the effect.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing that we may want to think about is, if this is a problem that can't, you know, be solved to everyone's satisfaction in the next few weeks, then maybe it's before next year's town meeting. I mean, there's certainly no gun-to-the-head situation here.
April, was it April?
Yeah, but we've got public hearings coming up and there's a schedule working forward.
Need to go on the agenda before our next meeting?
Planning board, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's already on the agenda as a placeholder.
Okay.
So.
I'd be happy to, within the week, get you a stab at adding a, unless a special permit is sought and given due to our consideration of reasoning for providing an extension.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, or you can take a stab at it. That's not a terribly, it's less complex than what.
Exactly, exactly.
You've succeeded at doing here, so.
You really probably only need to insert that clause in the existing bylaw.
It's a second paragraph, right?
Right, yeah.
By the way, Bob, what you've done here, knowing what you want to accomplish is great. I mean, you've really done a marvelous job with drafting it.
Don't sow your sow short on how you drafted it.
Yeah, it's excellent, Bob.
But I think, yeah, I think maybe, especially if you agree, I think, I think I would make a motion that the board asks the building commissioner to attempt to utilize the current section with the addition of a provision that allows the board to grant a special permit for an extension of the timeframes already included in 830.
We even need a motion, it's just, it's on the agenda, it's just discussed matrix of proposed changes.
I don't think so, but then I think-
I don't think it's a bad idea to-
I think, because then you can say the board made a motion and this is the paragraph that they are, that they supported.
The board reviewed it, the board-
I will second your motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, I mean, that simplifies the, the, uh, the issue, and I think it, uh, largely does what I, what I'm hoping to be able to do.
Sure.
Which is to give people who are aggrieved by this some, some hope of relief at some point.
Whenever we can help simplify the zoning code, I think we're, uh-
We help the hopeless.
That's above average for us.
It's above average, exactly.
Um, well, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
It's all right, thank you.
Have fun at AdCom.
Uh, yes.
And then, um, just quickly, George, so the way that we work the alternates versus the voting members is everyone votes, and the, the vote doesn't typically count to your point and question before.
It's recorded.
But it gets recorded, we do it as a matter of process, and then also in the event someone's vote was disqualified or whatnot, it is there waiting in the wings.
Okay.
With that, we are going to move on to our second application on the agenda of Benjamin Bornstein and Zara Luden of 99 First Parish Road in Situate requesting a special permit or finding pursuant to chapter forty-eight, section six, and/or section eight, ten point three of the Situate zoning bylaw to repair and add a second story to a pre-existing nonconforming structure on a pre-existing nonconforming lot on property located at 99 First Parish Road in Situate. Hi there.
Hi.
Pre-existing nonconforming street. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what you have planned?
Sure, so we're, we're seeking a zoning relief for section six finding, um, basically to repair, um-
Sorry, I get, Brian's correct, before you get started, just your, just your name-
Ben Bornstein, 99 First Parish Road and-
And I'm Zara Luden, 99 First Parish Road.
Thank you.
Sorry, um-
It's my fault.
And, uh, so we're seeking, uh, section six finding to repair, uh, and add a partial second story to a nonconforming accessory use structure at the rear of the property. Um, I think you already read that from the hearing announcement, but, um, basically this building, um, has had a long history as an accessory use, I think, believe it was, was constructed, obviously, pre, pre-zoning act and, um-
Do you know when it was constructed?
Uh, the accessories records say nineteen sixty-two, but, um, I'm not, that's, that's all we have to go on, we don't have anything, any sort of plans or anything recorded that would indicate the actual date. Um, the building conforms to, to the setback requirements except for, um, on the west side of the building, there's a, a greenhouse off the side that is, uh, three point two feet at its minimum point, um, where in our zoning, R3, it's an eight-foot side yard setback, um, and then part of the wall structure itself, um, is nonconforming also to the setback, um, and has a variable setback from eight and a half feet to seven point four feet, uh, it's not totally square to the property line, so it's a little bit variable. Um, I think, uh, as part of the project, we would propose to remove the greenhouse and also a raised kind of planter that's built onto the building, it's a, it's a masonry wall, um, permanent structure, and we'd be removing those and we would basically be bringing the building into conformance of the side yard setback except for the, um, southwest corner of the building wall, which would remain at the seven point four foot setback. Um, other than that, it's a fairly straightforward project, we're just trying to kind of finish everything and make it a space that we can use for home office and studio, uh, as well as a small garage, and then the adding, the additional over twenty percent increase of the small second story would enable us to have the space that we need, um, so I would entertain any questions from the board.
All right.
It appears to be a, a flat-roofed building, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah, the building is, um, so it was originally constructed, to our knowledge, as actually a welder's garage and like auto mechanic shop, so it has-
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, so it has a like kind of an interesting, and at some point, obviously, like there was a brick facade added and some people did some, put some, like, some windows in and things like that, um, but it's a, it's a cinder block construction with steel beams, a flat rubber roof and a concrete slab, and, um, it were, the, our intent is during the renovations, um, to kind of pay homage to the existing architecture and kind of give it a more, kind of an industrial look, but a little bit more modern and a little bit more finished, uh, uh, for a residential kind of use.
And it's gonna be like personal use?
Personal use, yeah, we're both self-employed, so it'd be, uh, office space, um, we would be retaining one, like, the garage bay, that, a major portion of that, uh-
There's already a garage there, right? Yeah.
Correct, yep, yep. Um, and then there would also be a, a room for kind of like home gym and, um, like a music studio type space.
I saw that. And that'd be like personal, like if you guys wanted to play music yourselves, not-
Right, our intent is not to have a recording studio or anything, and, and, um, for our home, for our home use, uh, it would really be, there wouldn't be people coming to the property or anything, we both, uh, would kind of be using it in a, as consultants, I guess. Uh, I have a landscape design business, but my real operational part of my business is, is elsewhere, and this is more of a design studio where I can do my plans and things like that.
Is there septic or, um, water?
There's an existing, there's an existing water line from the house, um, it's been capped off because there's no plumbing fixtures in the building, um, there's a electrical service and a gas service, all pre-existing, there's a pipe that goes, I think, to a, a relic septic system somewhere, but since that has existed, the, the house itself has been on town sewer, so we're exploring options to, uh, tie into the town sewer, um, up at the house connection if we're adding bathrooms.
Brian, George?
Um, you're not gonna, are, are you going to change, um, any of what looks like a driveway?
Uh, nope, there won't, there won't be any changes to the driveway layout, um, there'll be no, I guess I shouldn't say there'd be no addition of impervious service, but it would be very minor, it would be like maybe a landing for a doorway or something like that, so there really will be no need to look into any stormwater or anything like that, and we'll be very cognizant to make sure that's all managed in appropriate manner.
Just to clarify, this has nothing to do with the house, correct?
Correct.
It's nothing to do with the primary dwelling, this is a hundred percent the accessory structure at the rear of the property.
Yes, that's correct.
And there's no intent to, um, to turn this into an accessory, excuse me, an accessory dwelling, it's going to be purely essentially, uh, professional office space?
Yeah, and-
For yourselves?
Yeah, professional office space, but also like home use that we, in a small house, we don't have room for a drum set or having a band practice or something like that, so-
Sure.
Yeah.
Even in a big house, you don't.
That's true.
Yeah, and he's a drummer, so we need to get him to another building.
You need him out of the-
Yeah, exactly.
Probably move it further back.
Well, without, without an accessory dwelling permit, that wouldn't be an option anyway.
Yeah, and that's, just-
But we're not, we-
Flushing it out. And that was, that was Bob's real one note, was, uh, mainly a note in support of this in that they are removing nonconformities, and then he just cautioned that this could not be, as part of this application, at least to your point, this could not become a dwelling unit, but I think the applicant understands that.
Correct, yeah, and, and if, if, if that was something we would do in the future, owners would do in the future, we'll make sure we go through the, the accessory dwelling permit application and all of that.
All right, with that, anyone from the audience have any questions or comments on this application? No? Okay. With that, do we have a motion?
Make a motion on the application of Benjamin and Zara, uh, Benjamin Bornstein and Zara Luden of 99 First Parish Road on their request for a special permit slash finding in accordance with match in the law, chapter forty-eight, section six, eight, ten point three of the Situate zoning bylaw, uh, find that the structure is pre-existing, nonconforming, um, and that the addition as purported to the plan prepared by Ross Engineering, dated July twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, is not substantially more detrimental, uh, to the neighborhood, and approve it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Who's, uh, who's up?
I'll do it.
There we go.
We're volunteering, volunteering.
Generous bunch. For our third application, we have Carrie Lynn Croforest of ninety-six Turner Road in Situate requesting a special permit finding pursuant to eight, ten point two and/or MGL, chapter forty-eight, section six, to allow the extension of a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling, increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent, the property being located at ninety-six Turner Road in Situate. Welcome. Again, uh, just your, uh, names for the record, please.
For the record, Gregory Morris of City Engineering, Morris Engineering, with me is the property owner and applicant, Carrie Lynn Croforest. As was just written to the record, this is a request for a special permit to allow an addition back to the home at ninety-six Turner Road, uh, the property is located in the R3 zoning district, referring you to the plan, the property line is shown in black, approximately fifty feet wide, Turner Road, page. I've highlighted in brown the existing home, which is kind of centrally located on the lot, the home was built in nineteen twenty-five, um, the lot and the structure are both nonconforming with respect to several aspects. The lot area exists at five thousand square feet, or one thousand is the requirement, the lot width is fifty feet wide, where a hundred feet is the requirement, the frontage is fifty feet, where one hundred is the requirement, and the front yard setback exists at twenty-eight point five feet, where thirty feet is the requirement for the front yard. The proposal here is to add a two-story addition, I've highlighted that in orange, the addition would, uh, be off of the back of the house, uh, it's relatively modest in size, it adds approximately three hundred and eighty-one square feet, which would bring the house to a total of fourteen hundred and ninety-two square feet, which represents a thirty-four point two percent increase. The addition complies with all setbacks, the side setbacks, as well as the rear setbacks, it does not create any new nonconformities. The applicant went around to several of the neighbors and got signed, um, by seven of the abutters in the immediate vicinity, um, a letter of no opposition to the project. I'll turn that in for the record.
Thank you.
The proposed addition is only out the back, entirely within the building envelope, and, uh, no changes to the front or sides of the existing structure.
All right.
Taking it easy on us.
All right? Can I get nothing?
No?
I'll write it.
All right. Yeah, but for the twenty percent, they, no reason to be here, but-
Yep.
Exactly the kind of relief that we are empowered to grant.
Yeah, quite, quite empowered. Um, I don't think Bob had anything of note on this one, and, um, with that, anyone from the audience have anything on this application? No? All right. She's laughing back there. I thought it was at one of our expenses.
We just need a finding, right? It's not a special permit.
I think it is a finding.
Yeah, move to find that the application of, uh, Carrie Lynn Croforest?
Croforest.
Croforest, um, of ninety-six Turner Road, for the extension on a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling, increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent, is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and, uh, granted, and, and as in compliance with the plan, uh, by Morris Engineering, uh, dated twelve, ten, nineteen, entitled proposed addition, ninety-six Turner Road.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll do that one.
All right.
Volunteering.
Still in the Christmas period?
Cool, going gas.
Well, I think I'm not gonna be here on, in February, so-
I don't think I'm gonna be here, though.
Uh-oh. Maybe we have to change February.
Really? All right.
It's February vacation week, it's school vacation week.
Yeah.
I think, I think I'm doing-
Powder eights.
Powder eights, indeed. I think I'm doing home construction, but I prefer to be someplace else.
All right, with that, our third application, I'm sorry, our fourth application is that of Brian O'Neill Senior Esquire of thirty-five Gannett Road in Situate requesting a special permit finding under forty-eight, section six, and/or eight, ten point two of the zoning bylaw to raise and reconstruct a pre-existing nonconforming accessory structure, increasing the gross floor area by more than twenty percent, or property at thirty-five Gannett Road in Situate. Hi there, again, your name for the record, please, and tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
Sure, Brendan Sullivan from Kavanaugh Consulting, uh, here representing the applicant and owner, um, Brian O'Neill, uh, for thirty-five Gannett Road, um, the property's in R3 district, um, the lot is conforming, uh, and the main structure is conforming with all respects to zoning, um, except for the detached, uh-
Garage.
Detached garage in the southwest corner, uh, it's on the corner of Gannett Road and Pondview Ave, uh, so we have two fronts, basically, and two sides, um, the structure was built approximately nineteen ten, um, it is in a flood zone, AE, elevation sixteen, uh, we've been in front of conservation and got approval from them already, um, so the structure right now is, it's approximately twenty point three by twenty point three, uh, the homeowner would like to construct a twenty-four by twenty-four, uh, garage, increasing the square footage by about a hundred and sixty-four square feet. Um, the two side yard dimensions are one point six and five point five, uh, we're gonna maintain those, um, side yard setbacks. It's a one-story garage, it's gonna maintain a one-story garage.
So there's no change to the setbacks, is that correct?
No change proposed.
No change proposed, except for there are a few more running feet heading out towards Gannett and Pondview-
Yes.
That will be created within the setback.
Right.
Because the structure's going to be raised, I would propose that we ask the applicant to, uh, pull the structure back so that it conforms with, there's plenty of room, so that it conforms with the, uh, the setbacks, turn it into a conforming structure.
Well, how?
Is, is it intended to be completely raised?
Yes.
Is it not trying to save anything?
No.
I mean, I can, I can, I can see granting relief from the rear yard setback as it's a corner lot and not that large, Rockshet's a pretty good-sized lot, um, but the, uh, but the side yard setbacks, it, it seems a no-brainer to enforce them. The rear yard setback, because it's a corner lot?
Yeah, yeah, the radius.
That radius. I mean, it-
Well, the radius only applies to a, uh, primary structure, does it not?
Well, any, we can apply, um-
It's eight feet.
It's still eight feet.
No, it, I think it applies to any structure over a hundred and fifty square feet, right?
Right, and it's twenty feet, it would be a twenty-foot year, rear yard setback across the whole rear yard line, if there was such a thing, in this case, it's a, it's a small- In this case, it's a, it's a small, because it goes back to the corner. It's actually not even imposing a great deal on the space.
I'm reading on page 94 of your zoning bylaw, it says, "With the exception of one-story accessory buildings, in the case of a corner lot, the rear depth shall be at least an arc 30 feet for R1 and R2, and 20 feet for R3." So it looks to me that accessories buildings are exempt from that.
But not from the side yard? I mean, not from the side and rear?
My question on asking them to pull it back for an increase of, and remind me again how much bigger this is getting?
It's basically, so it's four feet each side. It's basically 20 by 20. Right now, we want to put in a 24 by 24. So four feet on, in each direction.
So is, is adding that much size to it along the same lines of the footprint more detrimental?
It wouldn't be if they were adding it, but they're raising and reconstructing it.
There's already a driveway there, right?
Yes.
Oh, right, but then they wouldn't have to be here to raise and reconstruct it in, they wouldn't have to be here to raise and reconstruct it in exactly the same location.
So our increase is 40 percent?
Yes.
We could, we could not be here and get a building permit for a 24, 20 by, 22 by 22 footprint?
Right.
We wouldn't have to be here at all.
Right. I would agree. And so...
What's the reason not to, to bring it conforming to the side yard setbacks?
Just want to put it in the same footprint that's been there since 1910, plus or minus.
You got to change the driveway.
No, you don't.
No, you don't.
You don't.
You don't.
You don't. It's going to be the same driveway. Everything's going to be virtually the same. It's just going to, it's going to move forward a few feet and move to the side a few feet.
Six and a half feet forward.
So the driveway would be...
Right, but the driveway would have to be changed a bit.
I would expect that...
The driveway's going to come up here and come up here.
I wouldn't be surprised if driveway's going to be reconfigured anyway, because the structure's going to be...
Larger.
Larger.
Yeah. I don't know. I think it's an opportunity to eliminate a non-conformity, or at least reduce, significantly reduce, a non-conformity, especially, I mean, it's right up against that property line.
It is up against that property.
And in terms of, you know, fire safety, it's better to have more access around the back of the building than less?
So could I propose this? So the extra to the side yard with this has the 1.6 setback. Could I set it back in a manner so that the area of the non-conformity remains the same?
Move that back to where it is now?
No, I would move it back so, so if we're, I mean, say that setback was two feet. So I have six feet times 20 feet of non-conformity. So that's 120 square feet. Could I put 120 square feet back in there with a new structure? It would be less than eight feet, but it would be more than the 1.6, if you understand what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying, but I, I think you're, you haven't yet answered satisfactorily to my, for me, why not bring it conforming? There's, you're not putting it on an existing foundation. There isn't like you've got, um, a foundation there that you were trying to use two, two walls of.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, the new construction is going to start fresh. If there was nothing there, you'd put it in complying. And to retain the extraordinarily close setbacks that are there now, I think it's, I'd like to know a compelling reason. Is there a ledge? Is there a tree? Is there...
There's nothing.
There's nothing.
It's slabbed on grade.
It eats yard to move it conforming. That's the reason.
It eats a little bit of yard, but even that amount of yard is tiny, particularly in consideration of the way the house, the way the property is laid out.
Yeah.
I mean, we're talking about driveway.
And it's, it's a 17,000-square-foot lot. It's not a small lot in a 10,000-square-foot zone.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I don't have a good reason why. There is nothing, you know, it's not like you're saving trees or ledge or anything like that.
Right.
You only want to put it in the same footprint, that's all.
Right. But it's, and it's on Gannett Road. It's on a, you know, major road. It's a substantial home. Again, I just, I'd like to have a compelling reason to grant the relief, and I don't think it's there.
So, and so just for them clear, it would be eight feet off of each line. The 20-foot setback would not apply to this?
I believe he's, I believe he's right on that.
Even if it wasn't, I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to grant that relief.
Eight feet off, off both, both lines?
And, and the rear, there'd be an eight-foot arc from the back corner.
I just, I forget the area.
There is still a rear setback.
Yes.
But it's eight feet. Correct?
Yeah, I think on the corner lot, there's no rear, it's just size.
For the one-story accessory.
Yeah.
And I'd grant relief from that.
Yeah.
It would be my fail.
Well, then, so we're just, I'm just withdrawing then?
Well, continue and just submit a revised plan.
Yeah. You don't want to have to refile.
If it's conforming, I don't need to be here.
That's correct.
That's what I'm getting at.
No, I think that you do, because it portions the lot, or, no, this is where it gets strange.
He's got frontage. If the, if the setbacks are eight feet and eight feet and that's conforming, then, yeah...
The only other option is to go conforming or build a 22 by 24 that's within the same footprint.
Yeah. My suggestion is that you continue it to the next hearing and submit something to Bob, and if he gives you a permit, then you withdraw.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you don't have to... But if another issue comes up, you're still on the agenda.
Okay. And I'll ask the homeowner if he has a compelling reason where to...
Right. Sure.
Why to keep it where it is.
I move to continue the application of...
Well, before, before you do, is there any public here?
Oh, thank you.
On this one?
Anyone from the audience here on this application? And since we are seeing what we're seeing, especially, let's see what Bob says here. Bob's Gannett Road, uh... Uh-oh. One more we want to hear from Bob. Yep, there we go. No increase in existing, unless in one story or higher. No. Either 20 feet. No. Okay.
So I move to continue the hearing of Brian T. O'Neill, Senior Esquire, 35 Gannett Road, Situate, Mass., to the February hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. And our fifth application of Natalie A. O'Connell of 94 Lawson Road in Winchester, Massachusetts, requesting a special permit finding under 48, Section 6 or 810.2 of the bylaw to allow the extension of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling, increasing the gross floor area by more than 20 percent for the property located at 31 11th Avenue in Situate.
Good evening. Jeff Delisi, I'm here tonight with Paul Townsend, our client, who is the builder of the property, and Greg Morse tonight from Morse Engineering. Essentially, this is a raise and reconstruct project. The house was built in 1928. The dwelling is located, or the property's located, in R3 10,000-square-foot zoning district. The, the lot's non-conforming, about 7,700 square feet and about half the required frontage. The structure, or the existing non-conforming dwelling on the property is pre-existing non-conforming with respect to front yard setback and northeasterly side yard setback. The, the concept here would be to reconstruct the dwelling, which presently is a one-and-a-half story dwelling. We would still comply with height requirements, but we would make it a two-and-a-half story dwelling. We would eliminate the front yard setback, which is actually calculated as an average setback at about 16 feet, and we would move it to about 24 feet. Presently, it's right around 16 as well. And then, um, off of the right side yard or the northeasterly side yard, we're eliminating that non-conformity as well. I don't know which plan you have in front of you. Greg's chart shows, uh, shows the proposed setback to be six feet, but he was just measuring it to the bulkhead, which is allowed to extend into the setback area. So the, the proposed dwelling would eliminate the front and the right setback non-conformity. Otherwise, the, the structure will be fully dimensionally non-conforming. Additionally, the property is in the floodplain overlay.
I'm sorry, dimensionally conforming, you meant?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Of course.
Good distinction. I appreciate it. The, otherwise, the property is in the floodplain overlay. After the application was filed, Greg, Greg did a little more diligence and, and determined that actually the structure, the existing and the proposed structure would be outside of the, um, of the floodplain, even though it's basically, it matches the FEMA floodline. And so I, I don't think, therefore, we need a special permit, but we're requesting it anyway. And we would obviously have to meet the building code requirements, but we're not in a special flood hazard zone, so we don't need to elevate the house or anything to that effect. So, um, with that, if you want Greg to present the plan, or if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I think I'm probably, probably good on the presentation of the plan. Thank you. Anyone else agrees? Any questions? Anything else to add? George? No?
Nope.
No.
And this is exactly the kind of thing we're looking at. We've got an existing structure that's non-conforming in many ways. The proposed new structure is going to bring the structure conforming, and we can't conform the lot, because you can't make a bigger piece of parcel.
Right. Right. Yeah. Okay. Anyone for the audience here on this application? No? Okay. With that, we have a motion.
I move to grant the applicant's request for a special permit pursuant to City zoning bylaw, Section 810.2, and under 48, Section 6, that the proposed raising and reconstructing of the dwelling at 31 11th Ave. will not be more substantially detrimental to persons and property in the neighborhood, and move to grant the requested floodplain special permit to the extent that it applies to this project.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Hey, can you, uh...
Help us out with a decision there? Wonderful.
Yeah, I'll get one shortly, actually. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hmm?
That's right.
It's much better if they do it.
All right.
Although I would, I'd look to do this. I'm going to look to try to get one.
We have our final application of the evening.
Too much.
That of Lawson Green SLR Limited Partnership, care of the Grantham Group, requesting a modification to comprehensive permit for Lawson Green Apartments, that the departure from, I believe that is supposed to say, LEED certification in favor of Energy Star Energy Efficiency Design Standards does not constitute a substantial change from the requirements imposed by the comprehensive permit issued in February of 2018. Hooray.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me back. So, um, this, this decision, this is really just actually a finding. These are items that were identified by closing attorney, there's about six different attorneys on this transaction, and, um, one of them just wouldn't move forward without a finding by the ZBA that a switch from LEED standard, LEED Building Standards to Energy Star Standards did not constitute an insubstantial change. Bob seemed to think that it wasn't a condition of the permit, but just to make everybody happy, I'm here tonight to kind of resolve that. And I've actually brought a decision with all the findings I could pass to you.
Okay. Absolute, permission to approach, absolutely. Especially when you come bearing a decision.
This would be like the original that I'd need to file with the town clerk tomorrow morning.
You've got up there. No pressure.
I probably close this next Tuesday, so...
So to, to that end, I'll throw my two cents in as well. I remember this application. I, I don't remember whether, I feel like maybe I do remember that LEED was mentioned, but I also remember that it was not something that we relied on in our granting of the application. I think maybe if you could just very quickly give us a little bit about why the change?
Okay, so the, the LEED Building Efficiency Standards were promulgated by the U.S. Sustainable Building Council. They kind of came out of the late 90s. They're about building high-performance, high-performance buildings. That doesn't necessarily mean high-efficiency buildings. They're actually, it's, over the years, the sort of goalposts have changed with regard to the standards. So that sort of becomes a little bit more of a beauty contest. So, for example, a LEED-certified building needs to change, a room needs to change its air every 30 times in an hour, whereas the code or Energy Star is, you know, 15 times an hour, for example. What, what happened between when we filed our application with the state and right now is the LEED standards changed in April of 2019, and they all of a sudden created a new sound attenuation standard, which has nothing to do with energy efficiency, it just has to, you know, deal with the fact that, you know, sound traveling between units. So what that, what that would have required in practical terms is that we install two sheets of 5/8 sheet rock between each unit. So we thereby doubling the amount of sheet rock we would be using in the project in order to meet this new sound attenuation standard, which does nothing for energy performance or efficiency or green building concepts. It's merely an additional cost that we couldn't bear. The cost of the project was about almost a quarter of, or almost a half a million dollars that we had not budgeted for, so we had to, we had to leave the standard behind. It just couldn't, we couldn't conform to it. What we have then instead is gone to the Energy Star standard, and building to that is actually going to deliver us a higher, a higher performing building from an energy consumption perspective, because you're not, you know, when you're heating and cooling and you're changing the air in a room 30 times in an hour versus changing it 10 times in an hour, your heat's going out in the winter and your cool air is going out in the summer, you know? So you're changing the air so that your consumption goes up. So, interestingly enough, I learned this along the way, that Energy Star is better than LEED when it comes to sustainability. So that's basically in green principles, that's the, the basis for why we're seeking this change. There's also one other item that I just wanted to roll through with you on, it's just fine, these are just generalized findings that the board would make, that the building plans and site plans are acceptable as submitted. They've been submitted to the building department for approval, and I believe we're one sign-off away from the DPW, from getting a building permit, and that there's no, oh, there's also a, an acknowledgement of the fact that the town has assigned an official address to the property, changing the address from Zero Central Park Drive to Two Central Park Drive, just an acknowledgement that that's an insubstantial change. And that, right, that's, and that there's no need to subsequently approve any easements created under the comprehensive permit. This is just something that was in the comp permit that we, we haven't created any easements on the property.
So remind me, what was in the comprehensive permit regarding easements?
It was just saying that we had to come to you to approve any easements. The only easements on the property that we, are not actually on the subject property, they are on the adjacent property in the existing parking lot, which is part of the site plan. So what we were trying to do by asking for that the board accept that they don't need to exercise any authority over any future easements, if we go outside of, if we have to execute a new utility easement and change something, if there's a giant rock that we find when we're digging, and we have to then, you know, turn the easement over here, we don't want to have to come back to the board to request that change, because it'll be with the landlord, which is the housing authority, to change the easement.
Right.
It's a utility. It's basically just concerns utilities.
Any easement to be created under the applicant's comprehensive permit? I'm just not following that. All right. just not following that. All right. Is that just me? What easements were we creating under the comprehensive permit?
It was just a reservation of authority, uh, to, to approve under the comp permit in the, in the board.
So, prior to them entering into any easements, they'd have to propose the easement to us to be, because I think subsequently it'd be, have to be put on the plan.
Yeah.
Right? Plan had to be revised.
Right.
Right, but at this point in time, you, the changes, would, would it matter? There aren't any easements on it. We didn't, we didn't put any easements on it. There's no-
That's correct. But by the, by virtue of the fact that this project's being built under that comp permit, the fact that there is, uh, under our ground lease with the housing authority, there is an easement in that ground lease. It's not a recorded easement. It's in the ground lease itself. We theoretically, if we change from those, we'd have to come back to you to ask for your permission to modify those. And we're, that's all I'm trying to do by a comp, is, is trying to eliminate that. It was flagged by another-
Yeah, and, and I, I'm not questioning because I have any issue necessarily with what you're saying, but I am a little, I'm wondering about, great, I, I have no reservations that the fluctuations in the address that's assigned or the change from LEED to Energy Star is an insubstantial change. Modifying a specific condition, eliminating what sounds like it was a specific condition in the already approved comprehensive permit, especially doing so when that's not really what was listed in the hearing, feels like maybe that should be two separate things at the very least. And it doesn't sound like you're modifying any easements now, so maybe if and when you were, or maybe if we were going to change this to that, that condition that was contained in the comprehensive permit, the board acknowledges that that shall not apply to utility easements? That makes sense to me, but just insubstantial change in two, insubstantial change in four, throwing in a complete deletion of a condition that was in the comp permit in three, sort of jumps out at me. I'm not even sure I have a problem with it. It just jumps out at me a little bit.
The utility stuff I'm not as worried about.
Me either.
But what if, I mean, and I'm not saying they're gonna do this, but, you know, what if they grant some big easement to go over the property to access all the stuff and now we have an oversight over, you know, I'm just thinking.
I'm not even sure I have a problem with that. It just feels like we're doing-
It's an overly-
Two little things and then maybe one-
It's a potentially overly broad statement.
I, yeah, and I think because, because of your training and your background, I think you guys are reading way too much into this. I think you're, you're looking at a kind of a nuclear scenario with what is a benign sentence.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you saying, hey, wait a second. Let's just put on the brakes here. But at the end of the day, you, look at, look at the land that surrounds this parcel.
Sure.
What easements could or would be granted by the applicant that would somehow impact this 40B?
It wouldn't all-
To be, to be honest, I'm not even sure the applicant has the right to grant any easements-
Yeah, because it's only-
Other than easements for the purposes of constructing this development.
And, and, and a utility easement.
So.
So, I, I just, I, from my point of view, I, and I, again, I appreciate your perspective, and I don't disagree with you saying, wait, wait, wait a second. But at the end of the day, I just-
I think, I-
I can tell you where this came out of. It came out of the fact that we're extending a, um, a sidewalk from the live, from the town-owned parcel next door across, and one of the, the investor attorney wants me to execute a use agreement and easement across, for that. And I said, we're not gonna do an easement. We can do a use agreement to say that the public could come across that, use that sidewalk. It, it was overkill, but it was just, I was asked to present it to say that there's no additional requests from the board to-
Could we, could we then say pedestrian or utility easements and leave it at that?
Sure.
Would that make sense?
Well, I mean, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Would that take care of your-
What do you think? I mean, yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing is that if I did subsequently have to modify the access easement, the vehicular access easement on the housing authority property, that, the parking lot essentially next door, then I'd have to come to you and ask for-
Yeah, and which relief, which relief would subsequently be granted?
Yeah, but I, I tend to think us in the future saying that any changes-
Sure.
To your access now is ins, I'm, I'm not sure we necessarily want to change that. It probably would be, but you probably got to come back for that.
I guess my thought was that this is sort of within the four corners of the existing comp permit, because the comp permit says a building, a 30-unit building. You know what I mean? It's not-
Yeah, but it's the layer, and I, I'm not saying I would have a problem with any possible changes.
Yeah.
But somebody might.
Yes.
And somebody might have the feeling that you do need to come back.
Okay, I can live-
That's why we tend to be careful with that sort of stuff.
We have an obligation to do our job.
Yeah, that's really where I'm coming from.
And abrogate our responsibility.
I agree with you that anything I could possibly imagine falling under this, you're gonna come back, and I'm probably gonna vote that it's not a substantial change. That doesn't mean I think you shouldn't have to come back.
Okay, that, I can live with that. Um, just sort of want to discuss some-
Pedestrian or utility easements adding to number three?
That, that's, that, I'm totally fine with that, with that. Um-
Do you want the original, on the, this copy just?
I don't know if you have this copy.
You have your-
Just write it in the one that we're gonna sign, so you can have it tonight?
Sure.
So, the, what I was, I was told, talked to Bob about was to get this made, assuming that the board is supportive of this finding tonight, to have it signed, and then I can get it to the town clerk tomorrow morning, and I can go record it. So-
Yeah.
To the permit. It's, this is just sort of from our perspective, house, a housekeeping matter.
There you go.
It's the closing.
If you initial it, or one of us initiates it, is that sufficient?
And there. There you go. Anyone from the audience here on this application? No? With that, I'll go ahead and make a motion that with the addition of the words pedestrian or utility to the finding and decision statements in the proposed decision regarding changes or approval of easements, that the board group-
You have to initial it.
Vote to find that the three proposed provisions regarding changes to easements, the address, and the change from LEED certification to Energy Star certification are not substantial.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have to initially, uh, change the-
Do we have any minutes?
Yes, you did. What month was that? That was September? I was fine with those.
Yep. Move to accept the minutes as submitted?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want to all initial that?
I, sure.
What do you think?
I think this is probably fine. Yeah, this is for you.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So, do we go to the town clerk?
I'll take it.
Okay, yeah.
That's fine.
Um-
Yeah, that's probably safe. Thought we all initialed.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we, we do. We, um-
I'm in the business.
We don't have anything else? With that, we have a motion to do it.
Move to adjourn?
Second. And good God, what am I doing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go.